Hi, go on. Welcome, everybody, to the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board meeting. I will quickly ask the clerk to take role, please.
County?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Grease?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, item two is approving the negotiations with Hawthorne Hill for the disposition sale of 1513 East Jefferson Avenue, Board of Communication number 12-357. Is there anyone in the audience to speak to the Hawthorne Hill negotiations to dispose of the Jefferson Avenue property? Anyone? All right, seeing none, could we have a motion?
No.
It's been moved. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The item passes, could we have a motion adjourned?
Moved.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We said adjourned, thank you all. Prior to the start of our city council meeting this evening, we're going to have a quick word from our own city council member, Hallie Grease. Those of you who would like to participate with us, we would ask you to stand at this time, and we will start our council meeting right after.
Please join me in prayer. God, we just thank you that you're good today, God, that you love us today, that you're passionate about your relationship with us today, God. God, we just pray for wisdom in our decision-making. We pray that you would give us as council members humility in these discussions, and we just pray for respect mutually between all of us, whether we agree or disagree on the issues. God, we pray that you would bless our meeting, and we just invite you to join us here this evening, in your name, amen.
All right, welcome to our city council meeting for July 9th. I will quickly ask the clerk to take role for the city council.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Grease?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, first item is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Can I make one correction?
Yep.
I've added extra item three. It's an appointment to a board and commission. Wendy, I think many of you have met Wendy before she's here, I'd appreciate it if we just make that part of the consent agenda. I know she has to leave shortly and was interested to make -- did she leave? All right, all right. But if we could make it part of the consent agenda, I'd appreciate it. I'll move it if that's necessary.
All right, the next item is to approve the consent agenda, which tonight is items three through 30, plus extra item three. These are routine items. We take them as one vote unless someone from the city council or someone from the audience asks one to be polled for further discussion or clarification. Tonight, again, those are items three through 30 and extra item three. Any other -- any items that anyone would like to poll? And I did -- The item five, council members, County and Moore vote no. Item 14, council member Moore is going to pass. Item 27H, council member Hensley votes no. Any other items? If not, could we have a motion to move?
I'll move.
All right, that takes us to item 31. Item 31 is the ordinance, its first consideration, mending Chapter 118 of the municipal code regarding utility deposits, Council Communication number 12-368. Mr. Manager, did you want to make a quick comment on that one?
On -- this is, Mr. Mayor, council members, this is a change that was precipitated by change in state code. Our best estimate at this point is it will not have a hugely negative impact on it -- on us, although the process that was in place before, where you had the ability to lean the non-payment of utility bills, was potentially very effective for us. This is a change that was precipitated by a change in state law, and we're recommending it to you simply to be in compliance with those changes.
So are you saying, then, that we would not be able to lean?
For rental properties, where the deposit is made, you would not be able to lean, is my understanding.
Can we have Bill answer?
Mayor, County, members of the city council, Bill Stowe, Public Works. Mrs. Hensley, it's fairly complicated because landlords must actually file an exemption from the leaning process, so to amend what Rick said a little bit, there's still an opportunity for leaning if one does not file that request for exemption. But essentially, for purposes of your analysis and thinking through the opportunity for some lost revenue here in alignment with state law, essentially, there will be no leaning.
So what are the landlords that request the exemption? Are they percentage-wise?
Well, clearly, it's a change in the law that has just begun, so we don't really have much base data. But we're assuming that many landlords will, in fact, say that this is not the responsibility of us as the landlord/landowner, it's, in fact, a separately metered tenant facility. So we expect that a number of people will do that. But the change that's being proposed to you tonight still allows us to have up to $175 in deposit, which is effectively three months of our utilities held by Waterworks to deal with up to three months of arrearsage. And that would be independent of the lean process, obviously.
Thank you.
I'll move.
Okay, that takes us to item -- move. Extra items. Extra item one is a request from council member Brian Meyer to speak regarding the proposed closing of streets in Laurel Hill neighborhood, Southeast 34th and Southeast 36th. Mr. Meyer?
Thanks, Mayor. It's my understanding that we're in discussion with railroads to talk about their need for easements and access through these areas, and where it stands now, as my understanding, is there's going to be a neighborhood meeting, I believe tomorrow night, or sometime this week. Is it tomorrow night, Bob? And I only know because I have, like, three other meetings that night. But the -- I think the idea of shutting out these neighborhoods like this is a bad idea, and I -- my idea tonight was to nip it in the bud, and I didn't oppose it, but are there people here to speak for or against it tonight on this particular issue? If there's nobody here, then I would respectfully request or refer this back to the city manager's office for review and a recommendation, but I, at this point, stand opposed to the closings, so we're taking that into consideration. So the motion is refer back to the city manager's office for review?
Seven, yes?
All right, item two is the approval of a letter from the mayor and the council members to the Iowa Finance Authority, IFA, in support of the Yonkers project. I agreed to sponsor this, and I'd like the manager to quickly clarify this.
Mr. Mayor, council members, recently, the council took action on the Yonkers project downtown, and one of the pieces of the funding for that project was so-called 4% money, which is a tax credit program offered by the Iowa Finance Authority. However, their rules up until recently made the use of those dollars for that project very difficult. The purpose of the letter is to allow the council to urge the Iowa Finance Authority to take action to allow the so-called 4% tax credit money to be made available for that project. We would ask that you go ahead and authorize such a letter. I should tell you, though, that we've had some initial indications as recently as today that the IFA board has -- is looking favorably at this request, so we're cautiously optimistic that they will, in fact, do it, but I do think your letter sent to the IFA board would be helpful nonetheless, and we'd ask that you approve it.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve this letter and send it up to the IFA board. I'd also ask that we, Mr. Manager, get an update as to the other items. I remember when we approved this, that there were probably three or four items similar to this that needed to fall into place, and if we could have an update on those and what the status is, that would be helpful.
We'll do that, Mrs. Hensley. We'll provide an update on the entire project and the status of it, and some sense of timing going forward.
Okay, thank you. Seven, yes?
We have a few minutes remaining before we can, I think, legally open the -- our hearings, which are to start at 5:00. Mr. Manager and the rest of the council, if you wouldn't mind, at least for a quick discussion, could we at least reopen item 12 for a larger discussion, not specifically about that one, but I think it has to do with planning, and I'd like to refer, at least make a request, so if somebody--
I'll make the motion to reconsider item 12.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item 12, it specifically is a request from Linda Cassis for a council-initiated request for vacation north-south alley in the east half of an east-west alley line between Southeast 8th Street and Southeast 9th Street from Scott to Shaw Street. Not so much specifically for this, but, Mr. Manager, I think that we ought to have a larger discussion on especially areas like this, which is just off our rather large highway project that we call the Southeast Connector, in the hopes that we have in the future of having success in commercial expansion and mixed-use expansion areas like that where we have a huge public investment and see opportunity. I am hopeful that as we move forward, that when we get a request that asks for certain vacations, and I know this is just initiating a policy, so I'm not specifically asking that because the discussion will come up later, but on this item. But as we look at items like this, it seems to me that before we just vacate property, we should have some sense that there's a plan for the area, and that -- because generally, we have initiated those kinds of things through plan and zoning, through our community development department and economic development, and we've had instances in the past where we've vacated certain piece of property for a not long-term use, and the city had to go back and reacquire certain properties, and it got very, very costly. And I just would suggest that we look at the policy, especially in these kinds of commercial areas, on vacations and conveyance of properties, and maybe we either look at leases or we look at something else that would accommodate an intermediate-term use. But if you would speak to that, I'd at least like to open the discussion, beans we have a couple of minutes here.
Mr. Mayor, council members, the situation you outlined, Mr. Mayor, has arisen before, where you're asked to sell land or vacate an alley or something of that nature in an area that's undergoing transformation. You've seen that occur in downtown. You've seen it occur along major projects like ML King Parkway or Southeast Connector. And generally, what you've asked us to do is to look at those future uses and structure our conveyances in such a way that you're not put in a position where you have to reacquire property that's in an area that's ripe for future development. The challenge is to find a way to do that, accommodate the needs of the individual, in this case, for item 12, it's Linda Cassis, but also take into account the city's long-term needs. And, yeah, I would think with a little bit of effort on all parties, we could accommodate the needs of this individual while at the same time not putting the city in a position of having to reacquire property at some point in the future. So I think it's a very good point. It is all about long-term strategic thinking, and perhaps we can apply it in this particular case. In any event, we will do that. Look and see if there's some accommodation that could be made to address those issues that you talked about there.
Right. Any other council members? Yeah, please.
Can I briefly make a statement? I think that's -- I'm glad you brought this, Mayor, because I think it's a great refresher of what we've all discussed in the past, and in this particular case, and I know there was some concern about the Capital Puffin hot dog last week, but in these particularly cases, there's two particular plans down there that have been in effect for quite some time, and maybe it's time to revisit them. The Market District Plan, which we -- I most recently looked at a couple months ago, which used to be called the Lower East Village Plan, but it is -- has been renamed to Market District, which is a very good plan, and it includes a lot of things we're talking about, including moving out Public Works and what do we do with the property we already own down there. And then the other plan is across the river in Sturvats Bowl, and I can't remember the exact name of the plan, but the idea is very similar to create a mixed-use district as well. So both of those plans would be affected by that, by the bypass and -- or the Southeast Connector, and I think it's time we should revisit both of those, and I actually would like the city manager maybe to set up a meeting. I did commit to setting up a meeting in September with people, residents and businesses affected by the Market District and the East Village. So if I could add that, Mayor, to any motion you may make to refer to the city manager to set up a meeting with affected people with the Market District and anybody else that wants to come and take a look. Does that make sense, Rick?
Sure. And if you would just add that we just refer to our planning staff, and let's have the broader discussion about what we do with all those areas, and I think you're absolutely right, Brian, that whole area, we ought to have that discussion amongst corners.
Right, so we -- and I think, Mayor, what you're getting at is refer to the city manager for a broader discussion, but including the Market District, and a broader discussion of some of the city-owned property in some of these high-valued areas.
Good job.
Okay. So the motion is refer to city manager.
All right, unless somebody has something, let's take a quick three-minute recess, and we'll be back in three or four minutes, and we'll start our city council meeting, which will restart it, actually, but we'll recess till about 1:00 before 5:00.
Let's say it's 5:02. Item 32 on the proposed urban renewal plan for the Ingersoll Grand Commercial Urban Renewal Area. Council Communication Number 12-372. A is the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. B is receipt of the Ingersoll and Grand Avenue revitalization strategy as amended by city staff and Ingersoll and Grand Avenue Planning Committee. Council Communication Number 12-374. C is resolution necessity. D is the first consideration of the ordinance designating the Ingersoll Grand Commercial Urban Renewal Area as a tax increment financing district pursuant to the Iowa Urban Renewal Law. And E is a consideration of ordinance above. The waivers requested by the Community Development Director and requires six votes. We will get started quickly. I would, I think I'm going to turn it over to the city manager quickly to go over the purpose of this and also where we're going with this tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, you're conducting a public hearing on the creation of a urban renewal in tax increment district for the Ingersoll Grand Corridor. It's been underway for quite some time. I know there's a lot of folks here in the audience this evening that have spent a lot of time working on it. It is indeed a great project, and I think holds great hope for that sector of our city. Mike Ludwig from Planning is here, and Mike is going to do the bulk of the staff presentation on it. But I did want to address a couple of issues that came to me today during Q and A with council members, and that is that the use of TIF dollars that this would generate over a period of time is a challenging issue for the city, but it's also a wonderful opportunity. If you read the blue letter, we talk about the fact that the TIF district will generate upwards of $16 million over 20 years, just based on the incremental value increases that will occur within the district. Several things about that number that I want people to understand. First is, these are projections. They assume a 1% increase in property values per year over that period of time. That 1% could easily be more or less, depending on what happens in the economy, and some people are familiar, within the last couple, three years, values in the city of Des Moines have actually dropped. That's not typical for our city, but that has occurred here. So again, these are projections, and we'll have to wait and see exactly what happens. The number may be more or less, depending on actual valuation changes. The second thing to note, just so it's clear, the $16 million is an accumulation of funds over that 20-year period. It's not an annual amount, and moreover, those annual generations that comprise the $16 million actually increase rather dramatically towards the end of the 20-year period. So in the initial years, the annual amounts would be somewhat less. Just important to keep that in mind. But the last point, and perhaps the most important one for everybody to understand about TIF dollars, is that this council has had a, really a very good record over the years of using TIF in a very prudent and judicious way. And as a matter of fact, in our discussions with the legislature about the use of TIF dollars, Des Moines is often held up as a city that has done a very good job in using TIF dollars, and that's partly because the council makes good decisions. These are council decisions in terms of how TIF dollars are spent. That would be the case with these dollars as well. And the decision-making for the council is typically done in the context of your annual budget. So when you're making budgetary decisions, you have to decide how much of that TIF revenue can remain within the district and how much you need to use to balance your general fund. So those are council decisions, and then you also review specific projects that utilize TIF dollars as they come before you. So these are important issues. It'll be done, I'm quite sure, with wonderful input from the neighborhood, who's worked so hard to put this in place. But these are very important decisions, and the council has to be careful, and has indeed been careful in the use of TIF dollars over the years, I think, to the benefit of the entire community. So as staff, we strongly recommend going forward with this. It is a great initiative. It will do great things for this neighborhood, I'm confident, over a period of years as the increment builds and develops. And with that, I'd like to have Mike Ludwig kind of pick it up from there and provide some of the planning background as well.
Mayor County and members of the council, Michael Ludwig, Planning Administrator, for you this evening is an urban renewal plan for, on an economic basis, economic development basis. General boundaries are shown in this salmon color on this map. Generally, the boundary is Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway on the east and roughly 43rd Street on the west. The properties that are included within the boundary are generally properties that front either Ingersoll or Grand Avenue corridor. And so some of those parcels are fairly deep. Rather than setting an arbitrary line between, you know, a midpoint and a property or something of that sort, we just followed the existing property boundaries for this proposed boundary. The urban renewal plan is a standalone plan. The downtown metro center urban renewal plan actually stops at Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway. So this is a separate urban renewal plan. It is based on a different set of criteria. The metro center urban renewal plan was established under BLITE designation at the time. This is based on an economic development basis. And the difference between that is, is that the, under an economic development basis, the use of TIF is limited to a 20-year time period, and that assumes that you do not use TIF for residential purposes. If it is used for residential purposes, the time period for use of TIF is reduced to 10 years. So as city manager Clark had explained, that the bulk of the increment in this TIF is generated after year 10, in years 15 through 20, basically. And so when individual decisions come before you for use of those TIF dollars, we would strongly encourage not using those for resident, purely residential projects, because it would reduce that time period for use of TIF to 10 years and would really defeat a major purpose of having that 20-year timeframe. So as was stated, you will have individual decisions to make on the use of TIF. Those would require recommendations from our urban design review board as those would come forward. And that includes also use for public projects. It could include streetscape and other public improvements, sewer, et cetera, along the corridors. The plan does not propose any changes to the future land use map for the area. Majority of the area is designated, I'm sorry, this is the actual neighborhood boundaries. And item B on your agenda is actually the Ingersoll Grand Corridor strategy that was worked on by representatives from the Restoration Ingersoll Group, as well as Ingersoll Business Association, and the 10 neighborhood associations that claim Grand and Ingersoll corridors as part of their boundaries. That was a strategic vision to try and move forward with some initiatives along the corridor. And one of the items that's identified in that strategy is the establishment of an urban renewal plan in TIF district. There are no proposed changes to the existing 2020 Community Character Plan, future land use map. Majority of this area is, currently designated for pedestrian-oriented commercial. There are some medium and high-density residential areas in this area. Those are the two predominant land use designations. The medium and high-density residential is included within the urban renewal plan boundary on the basis that there is clearly a symbiotic relationship between the density that's along Grand Avenue and the amount of commercial, and the success of the commercial that has existed along Ingersoll. There would not be that level of commercial intensity along that corridor without the residential density that exists in the surrounding neighborhoods. So it was seen as an opportunity to recognize that relationship and also to improve the corridor and the strength of the corridor from an economic development standpoint. There are no changes to the zoning map either, and this clarifies some of those boundaries between medium and high-density residential along Grand Avenue. With that, we are asking that the council find, make the following findings. One, that the Ingersoll Grand Commercial Urban Renewal Area constitutes an economic development area appropriate for redevelopment of commercial uses. B, I'm sorry, two, that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, or combination thereof of the urban renewal area is necessary in the interest of the public's health, safety, and welfare of residents of the city of Des Moines. And then finally, that the Ingersoll Grand Urban Renewal TIF Plan is in conformance with the 2020 Community Character Plan. So we are recommending adoption of that. I know there are representatives here from the groups that have worked on both the strategy as well as this urban renewal plan, and I believe that Ted Irvine is here to address you. I'm available if you have questions. Thank you.
All right. Any comments by the council? If not, we'll go ahead and open up the hearing. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Ted Irvine, 2801 Ingersoll, representing a bunch of neighborhoods and a bunch of commercial organizations today. I'm not going to, I'm not going to make any comments. You've heard them. I'm happy to answer some questions. Glenn Lyons is here to help, if it's too technical for me, which is pretty easy. But I'd like to recognize the folks that have worked on this plan, instead of coming up to speak, if maybe everybody that's here to support the plan today, if you could just stand up and show yourselves. Folks from the businesses, from the neighborhoods, from commercial organizations, from neighborhood organizations, I'm sure you recognize a lot of these folks. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Glenn's here as well.
All right.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you very much.
Anybody have any questions? Not, anyone else to speak? Let's go ahead and close the hearing. Ms. Hensley, did you want to?
I'm happy to make the recommendation to approve the urban renewal plan for Ingersoll Grand area, and I believe the fact that we don't have anybody here to speak against it is really significant. They clearly worked with all the neighborhood associations. I know I was just trying to figure out how many neighborhood associations were actually represented here tonight, and it's probably, as I was looking out there, five or six, I would guess, that are actually here with somebody. I see heads shaking, so that sounds about right. All those neighborhoods that are along the Grand and Ingersoll corridor. This is a significant step for us. We have a lot in the strategic plan that was accepted by the city council back in May, that was actually presented to the city council. There are some significant opportunities for us. We talked about the Bus Rapid Transit and DART. We, I will add that it was, it came in late this afternoon, but I believe we got a letter of support from DART on this plan, that they're very supportive and working with us. So I think it is a logical next step for us to have this extension of the TIF district. We've got some great plans. We've got some great volunteers that have really taken the lead and pushed this through with some help from the staff. And I don't think you could ask for a better formula on trying to make positive change and positive improvements within the city of Des Moines. We've got all of the critical pieces, the volunteers, the city staff, and this will give us an economic development tool to actually move forward and implement those projects. So I'm very excited about it and look forward to working with all the parties as we take it to the next step. And I will just share with you that I think others of us have received calls as well. There's a lot of pent-up interest in Ingersoll and Grand corridors. I don't think there's a week that goes by that we don't receive a call from somebody wanting to talk about an opportunity to develop or for a project in one of those two locations. And this will give us some additional economic development incentives that we can work with them on. So thank you.
All right.
And my motion is for 32, and A and B, and C, D, and E.
Very good.
Just to make sure.
All right. I just wanted to note that I am going to abstain on this item, this particular district. I have a business that lies in this area, and so I hopefully did not participate much in the discussion, but in the meantime, will abstain from the vote.
Six yes, one abstain.
Item 33, it's on appeal from Swift Auto Parts of 1720 East Washington, and thank you all who worked so hard on that Ingersoll area work. East Washington Avenue, the finance director's decision regarding towing and storage of junk vehicle bid award, council communication number 12-383. A is affirming the decision. Four, B, an alternate resolution reversing the decision. This was referred to our finance director and was hand-delivered as an appeal from an attorney representing Swift Auto Parts. I will ask Mr. Sanders, who are finance director, to address that appeal. But first, I'd like to have the city manager quickly make a couple of comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to frame this as Scott comes forward, we had some late information today, and Scott's going to talk about it in more detail, to the effect that we believe that CROTO, which was the decision, or the contractor you awarded the contract to at the last meeting, has apparently decided not to go forward. Our suggestion to cut to the chase here is to rebid this particular work, and that will be our recommendation. But I'm going to let Scott kind of go through how we got to that perhaps odd conclusion at this point. So with that, Scott, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Council, Scott Sanders, finance director. If you could, I think it'd be best that I show you the chronological order of how we got here this evening.
Starting with the bids being received on May 4th for the towing contract that involves junk vehicles on private property. After the bids were received on May 4th, the winning bid was accepted by council, the following council meeting, actually two council meetings later, on June 25th, at which point Mr. Swift, through his attorney, appealed that decision. And with the process of appeal, that goes to the finance director. So I looked at that appeal and responded to that with a letter just a couple of days later. I believe in your packets, you have the appeal that's dated June 27. And within this appeal, there, I found at least in reading it, four areas that were of contention. And so I addressed those in the decision of the appeal. And essentially, you'll see these four points brought up as issues and responses. Again, this was dealing with Mr. Swift in the appeal process, and so there were questions about experience in some of the other applicants. And then essentially, what became the heart of the misunderstanding, if you will, is whether or not the city had the ability to resell junk vehicles and essentially put those back as street-worthy vehicles. Understand that the past history with the city has always been to demolish the vehicles. And so the real question is, with issue number four in this misunderstanding of whether there is a true requirement or not to demolish. The bid documents themselves do not specifically state that the city has to demolish the vehicles. There was a small opportunity, if you will, and rare instances, for the city to make a determination that the vehicle might be available for resale. We left that option available in the bid documents, but we knew, again, at the staff level, the history had been to always demolish. So again, the appeal that I responded to was to uphold the decision to award the bid to CROTO with the understanding that all the four issues could be explained, essentially with the responses that were given. So this was provided to Mr. Swift, and within a few days after that, there was an appeal of now the finance director, my decision. And you'll notice that the focus now really becomes the question of, did all bidders understand that, given the tradition or the practice of always demolishing, had this small opportunity for resale? And so that then further broadens, if you will, the discussion that needed to take place with CROTO, the winning.
...hear from the groups that have worked on both the strategy as well as this urban renewal plan, and I believe that Ted Irvine is here to address you. I'm available if you have questions. Thank you.
All right. Any comments by the council? If not, we'll go ahead and open up the hearing. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Ted Irvine, 2801 Ingersoll, representing a bunch of neighborhoods and a bunch of commercial organizations today. I'm not going to make any comments. You've heard them. I'm happy to answer some questions. Glenn Lyons is here to help if it's too technical for me, which is pretty easy. But I'd like to recognize the folks that have worked on this plan instead of coming up to speak. If maybe everybody that's here to support the plan today, if you could just stand up and show yourselves. Folks from the businesses, from the neighborhoods, from commercial organizations, from neighborhood organizations, I'm sure you recognize a lot of these folks. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Glenn's here as well.
All right.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you very much.
Anybody have any questions? Not anyone else to speak? Let's go ahead and close the hearing. Ms. Hensley, did you want to?
I'm happy to make the recommendation to approve the urban renewal plan for Ingersoll Grand area, and I believe the fact that we don't have anybody here to speak against it is really significant. They clearly worked with all the neighborhood associations. I know I was just trying to figure out how many neighborhood associations were actually represented here tonight, and it's probably, as I was looking out there, five or six, I would guess, that are actually here with somebody. I see heads shaking, so that sounds about right. All those neighborhoods that are along the Grand and Ingersoll corridor. This is a significant step for us. We have a lot in the strategic plan that was accepted by the city council back in May that was actually presented to the city council. There are some significant opportunities for us. We talked about the Bus Rapid Transit and DART. I will add that it came in late this afternoon, but I believe we got a letter of support from DART on this plan that they're very supportive and working with us. So I think it is a logical next step for us to have this extension of the Tiff district. We've got some great plans. We've got some great volunteers that have really taken the lead and pushed this through with some help from the staff. And I don't think you could ask for a better formula on trying to make positive change and positive improvements within the city of Des Moines. We've got all of the critical pieces, the volunteers, the city staff, and this will give us an economic development tool to actually move forward and implement those projects. So I'm very excited about it and look forward to working with all the parties as we take it to the next step. And I will just share with you that I think others of us have received calls as well. There's a lot of pent-up interest in Ingersoll and Grand corridors. I don't think there's a week that goes by that we don't receive a call from somebody wanting to talk about an opportunity to develop or for a project in one of those two locations. And this will give us some additional economic development incentives that we can work with them on. So thank you.
All right.
And my motion is for 32, A and B, and C, D, and E.
Very good.
Just to make sure.
All right. I just wanted to note that I am going to abstain on this item, this particular district. I have a business that lies in this area, and so I hopefully did not participate much in the discussion, but in the meantime, will abstain from the vote.
Six yes, one abstain.
Item 33, it's on appeal from Swift Auto Parts of 1720 East Washington, and thank you all who worked so hard on that Ingersoll area work. East Washington Avenue, the finance director's decision regarding towing and storage of junk vehicle bid award, Council of Communication number 12-383. A is affirming the decision. Four, B, an alternate resolution reversing the decision. This was referred to our finance director and was hand-delivered as an appeal from an attorney representing Swift Auto Parts. I will ask Mr. Sanders, who are finance director, to address that appeal, but first I'd like to have the city manager quickly make a couple of comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to frame this as Scott comes forward, we had some late information today, and Scott's going to talk about it in more detail, to the effect that we believe that CROTO, which was the decision or the contract where you awarded the contract to at the last meeting, has apparently decided not to go forward. Our suggestion to cut to the chase here is to rebid this particular work, and that will be our recommendation. But I'm going to let Scott kind of go through how we got to that perhaps odd conclusion at this point. So with that, Scott, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Council, Scott Sanders, finance director. If you could, I think it'd be best that I show you the chronological order of how we got here this evening. Starting with the bids being received on May 4th for the towing contract that involves junk vehicles on private property. After the bids were received on May 4th, the winning bid was accepted by council the following council meeting, actually two council meetings later, on June 25th, at which point Mr. Swift, through his attorney, appealed that decision. And with the process of appeal, that goes to the finance director. So I looked at that appeal and responded to that with a letter just a couple of days later. I believe in your packets you have the appeal that's dated June 27th. And within this appeal, there I found at least in reading it, four areas that were of contention, and so I addressed those in the decision of the appeal. And essentially, you'll see these four points brought up as issues and responses. Again, this was dealing with Mr. Swift in the appeal process, and so there were questions about experience in some of the other applicants. And then essentially what became the heart of the misunderstanding, if you will, is whether or not the city had the ability to resell junk vehicles and essentially put those back as street-worthy vehicles. Understand that the past history with the city has always been to demolish the vehicles. And so the real question is with issue number four in this misunderstanding of whether there is a true requirement or not to demolish. The bid documents themselves do not specifically state that the city has to demolish the vehicles. There was a small opportunity, if you will, and rare instances, for the city to make a determination that the vehicle might be available for resale. We left that option available in the bid documents, but we knew, again at the staff level, the history had been to always demolish. So again, the appeal that I responded to was to uphold the decision to award the bid to CROTO with the understanding that all the four issues could be explained, essentially with the responses that were given. So this was provided to Mr. Swift, and within a few days after that, there was an appeal of now the finance director, my decision. And you'll notice that the focus now really becomes the question of, did all bidders understand that, given the tradition or the practice of always demolishing, had this small opportunity for a resale? And so that then further broadens, if you will, the discussion that needed to take place with CROTO, the winning bid. Meanwhile, because there was an award by the council, we had started the process in finance of putting together contract discussions. And so this then allowed me the opportunity to bring in Randy and speak to him myself. At the point that I had issued my decision to uphold the award, my staff had, through the procurement office, confirmed that CROTO wanted to move forward with their bid. And so I had no reason at that point to stop the process. However, I had an opportunity after my decision to meet personally with CROTO and explain that the contract would state the very unlikeliness of the ability to resell these junk vehicles. You can imagine, as stated in the blue letter, community development is concerned about these junk vehicles ending up right back in neighborhoods on private property. And so the past practice, again, has been almost exclusively to simply demolish. Now here's where the twist comes in, if you will. And so I have more information now, within the last couple of days after my decision, that makes it clear in my mind, we did not do a good enough job in our bid documents to clarify that if, in the rare instance, there was an opportunity to sell a vehicle, it had to go through a whole different process, it would have to go through a different process, similar to what police auction bids are set up to do. And so to kind of cut to the chase for you here, what I found out after my original decision is that there was not enough clarity in our bid documents and explanation of what the intent was. And again, the intent is not to change the policy, although the bid documents could have been interpreted, and I think were interpreted, that there was more of an opportunity to resell these vehicles. So I think the responsibility falls back on the finance department to rebid this contract and make it very clear what our intent is, if there is, and I'm not saying that there is at this point, but if there is a desire to change the policy, that it's clear to the bidders before they submit their bids. What that leads you to then is actual reversal of my decision and ask that we go back out and rebid this as clear as possible.
Okay, any questions?
My, I don't have a question, I have a comment. I support the recommendation. I think returning with better clarity is the right and fair and most transparent way to deal with a situation that I don't think anybody would say they're 100% sure the city was at its best performance at every step. So I think this is a fair way, although I'm certain, quite frustrating to some, the fairest way to resolve a difficult situation.
In terms of clarity and for crushed and dismantled vehicles and their disposition?
Yeah. I think Scott's closing comments that the clarity of the bid documents could be improved if we went back out, I think will resolve many of the issues that we have. So if that's okay, that could be a motion.
My name's Randy Crowe. I represent CROTO. In talking to staff and Sue Ann Donovan and both Scott Sanders, I've had great feedback, great information. I want to be clear, I did not pull my bid. I'm not sure where that came. I stand by my bid. I gave you a flawless bid, based on the criteria that was in the packet. Okay? I understand, and we've had some great conversations. The city, at the end of the day, they need to have the will and have represented what they want, and what they want, if they choose, to not have any of those cars ever hit the street, that is their option. But I want to tell you, as a business operator, I gave you everything you asked for. I gave you the best possible price. This change, the scrap price is what drives this contract. The scrap price in the last 30 days has dropped $100 a ton. It affects this contract dramatically. You're going to see the impact. I stood by my bid, no matter what happened, and I stand by it today. In rebidding this, the impact, this is a five-year contract with annual renewables. The impact is nearly a quarter of a million dollars when it becomes rebid. And again, if your choice and your directive is that, I want you to be aware of that. And I will rebid it, and I will use all the fervor that I used the first time to bid it, and I will be extremely aggressive. The contract is very clear, very clear, that it states that it is for salvage certificate and/or an application for title. That is the bidding contract. The code of Iowa, the fourth appeal, I had a flawless bid, had no problems with it whatsoever. I've had, we're up to really about the fourth appeal on this, and they've, all the appeals based on that information have upheld my bid. Now, this is different. This is the will of the department, if you will, that wants to demolish all these vehicles. Now, whether they want to demolish all these vehicles or not, they're trying to protect themselves from a perceived problem of these vehicles potentially hitting the road, not an actual one that is there. I understand and respect if that's what they want to do, but it is a huge financial direction changer for the city.
When you say the quarter million dollars, is that...
The value of the vehicles, based on what scrap was, the difference...
It's a negative impact to the city.
Correct. The current bid is 277. Okay? The three bids were 165, 180, 277, when scrap was nearly 265 a ton. Scrap today is 170 a ton. You can only imagine the direction the bids will go.
How often, is that, just from my information purposes, does scrap typically change that much, that quickly?
No. It is a commodity. There are things that make it change dramatically. But with this dramatic 40% drop, I stood by my bid because that's, when you're in business, that's what you do. My bid was flawless, based on the criteria you gave me. The final comment that I had received is that they wanted to withhold that. That's after the council had already voted on it and approved it, and they're wanting to add additional stipulations. I understand that. If that's what they want to do, throw the baby out with the bathwater and let's start over. I understand that. But I want to be very clear, I stand by what I did, and I feel very proud in what I did as far as the bid packet, and I gave you the best shot, and that you will see a negative impact. You've hired someone, you are wanting to hire in this contract, someone who is, has expertise in the disposal of vehicles. Housing would not, or the community development would not be the person to know how much a vehicle would be, which ones should have a title, which ones shouldn't, how to maximize. I currently have an auction. I do business with three different law enforcement agencies, public entities, and we dispose of those vehicles per the code of Iowa. The code of Iowa was 321.89, not 90, which is specified. 90 has just demolished. 89 has to do with the impounding and the disposal process. It is an entirely different code. We do that currently. Even though we title those, over 90% of those vehicles still go to demolishers. They are the normal salvage yards you see across the city that also have dealer's license. They have the full inventory of parts to fix this car. Who is better attuned to knowing what should be titled than myself being in the business and my customers? Again, such a minute percentage goes to the general public. I just wanted to get the information out, maybe more than you need. You've chosen a direction. I stand by my bid. I did not retract it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Randy, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me what iron prices are going to be in a year, two years, or five years?
About the same as corn. Be about as good of a guess.
So you're saying $250,000 loss is pure speculation on your part?
No, I'm talking about the spread. If you take the spread between my price and the other two bidders that you had, that will equate out to that price. Forget the price of scrap. The price of scrap has no effect on the bids. Those bids are locked, no matter whether scrap is $10 or $500. Those bids are locked in, and the difference between my bid and the bidder that's following the appeals is that spread. We're talking, under what you're currently paying, this, just this extension, has been a 60-day extension. It's cost the city somewhere in the neighborhood of $15,000, which is the spread between the 125 it is currently and the 277 that I would be supplying.
All right.
Randy, a question. When you say scrap, does that mean parted out, or does that mean crush it when they're saying...
Shredded. Yeah, run it through the shredder. That's by the pound, on the hoof, if you will.
Crushing it and then getting rid of it, yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
Excellent.
Because I know there's a lot of cars out there that you can part out and come out a way ahead.
Exactly. And we take a blend with that. You have to remember, what does the city impound? They also impound mopeds, campers, things that have zero value, and I'm paying the same 275 for those.
All right. Randy, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I'd like to make a, or take a quick moment to have our city attorney clarify, I think, some issues around the bidding process.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With respect to Mr. Crowe's comments, I do want to take exception, take issue with one item that he said. He said staff has come back and added on new demands and stipulations. That's absolutely not true. Don't agree with that characterization of what's happened here. There's confusion as to what's permitted under statute and what staff understood the bid specifications to say initially versus what Mr. Crowe believed they said versus what Mr. Swift or the other bidder believed they said. That's what has generated the confusion here, not that staff has decided at a late hour to change and add different stipulations to the bid specifications. That'd be improper anyway.
My name is Amanda Green, and I am attorney at the Nating Law Firm, and I'm the attorney for Swift. And I drafted the two appeals that were submitted and were shown to you earlier, and I believe they're provided to you in the agenda packet. We sincerely appreciate the finance director taking a deeper look at these issues, specifically the resale versus the scrapping issue, because as shown in our appeal, that truly is the heart of why my client is appealing the bid being awarded to CROTO. So I just want to make a few comments. The legal statute that was provided to the board in my appeals clearly states that the vehicles must be scrapped, demolished. It does not allow for those vehicles to be resold. It's mandatory language. It says "shall," and it gives an exclusive exhaustive list of things that the demolisher shall do with those vehicles, and one of those is not resell the vehicle. So when the staff goes back to look at that and clarify the bid instructions, that should be closely looked at. It shouldn't just be language thrown in there that says, if the city wants to, case by case, even if it is a small percentage. It is our belief that demolishers cannot do that, whether the city wants to allow that or not. One clarification I want to make is if you look, if you look at the Iowa Department of Transportation's Certificate of Disposal of an Abandoned Vehicle, on page two, it's authority to transfer and/or demolish a vehicle. And I think this is the crux of where a lot of confusion is coming from, because it said authority to transfer and/or demolish a vehicle. And I believe what has happened is CROTO and maybe others have interpreted authority to transfer to mean that you can transfer, i.e. resell. And in fact, if you look, just read the language on the certificate, it's limited. You are hereby given authority to demolish the vehicle described below. You are hereby given the authority to dispose of the vehicle described below. It does not have a box that you can check for resale. So I wanted to clarify that, and I believe that is where the confusion in the bid documents is coming from. It says authority to transfer. Another comment I want to make is my client, Swift, has had this contract for five years, which I'm sure you are all well aware of, with no incident. You have to take pause and think, why does one bid far out bid the other two bids, which are very similar in price, and it comes back to this? It's their belief that they could resell them, which my client knows by going down to the Iowa Department of Transportation, that Iowa Department of Transportation will not allow you to resell. I don't have anything further unless you have some questions for me.
Anybody have any questions?
On that, the authority to transfer, the second line you can check says for demolition or dismantling. So if the city were to have a car hauled off, and it's a 1966 Chevelle SS 396, it's in good shape, could that box be checked and that car parted out?
Parted out, I believe, is different than reselling, but parted out, I believe they could do. I didn't look closely at that under the code. Let me look. So the code section says shall junk, scrap, wreck, dismantle, or demolish, so scrap, I'm assuming that would fall under there.
It could be dismantled, parted out.
Yes, the code allows for that.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Thank you.
Just briefly, council, when you look at this, and again, I'm not appealing, but when you look at this, she is misinterpreting the code. She's using 321.90. I live between bookends of 321.89. The abandoned vehicle and the disposal, what you're doing falls under the code of 321.89. So when you're looking to do and whatever you want to write, please be aware of that. In fact, if you pull the other half of the document she left out, this is the abandoned vehicle sales receipt. There's two sides to this document. This document is set up, is used by law enforcement agencies all over the entire state, including the Des Moines Police Department. When they have their auctions, they use this form, and they sell them, and they retitle them. This is the same form. The law has two parallel entities. One is by police authority, and the other is by private entity. They each have a set of rules how they have to follow. It's very similar. They use the same document. They both can title and/or transfer vehicles. Now, the city, as a matter of practice, can say, yes, we understand the code of Iowa says you can, but we want to contract and crush them all. You have that right. But the code, I want to be very clear, allows, along with Polk County does the same way, it allows you to choose how this vehicle is disposed of. And the code of Iowa is 321.89. Thank you.
One question I had. When you bid, did you have the same intention as what our staff had in the procurement process?
I cannot speak to what your staff's intention is, but I can tell you that I read the bid cover to cover, based on the data that was in it, and bid it accordingly.
And I don't disagree with that, and I think that's where the issue arises, is you were bidding with a completely different intention than what our staff was looking to receive. And not that that's your, I'm not...
Right. Ultimately, all I can deal with is the written word. If we're doing it on contractual basis, I read, I take the document, and I process it accordingly, and that's what I did.
Right. And the other reason I ask that is because I think it's clear, going back to what Scott said initially, there was confusion on what was being bid. Swift bid something different than what Crowe bid, and so that's a reason for the discrepancy. And so I don't see how we do anything about rebid.
And that's why, going forward, I am not attempting to stop what you're trying to do today. Scott and I've had a great conversation. We're on the same wavelength. The city wants something else. I bid it accordingly, and I want to be clear, when you do whatever language you do, that you're using the proper part of the code. And again, we'll bid it in whatever form that you choose. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe Amanda, I apologize. I believe the reason Amanda's focusing on point 90 is so that there's the possibility of a tow, or whether it's myself or someone else, would not bid it in the future. It's more of a competitive issue. If you read the code that applies to the disposal of vehicles, it is 321.89. 90 talks about the voluntary disposal of abandoned vehicles. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other speakers? Seeing none, let's go ahead and close the hearing. And...
Mr. Mayor.
Coleman, you had spoken earlier, but anybody, yeah, Hallie.
Unless anyone has anything to add, I think it's pretty clear that what was bid... I think it's pretty clear that what was bid on were different understandings of what we had sent out. So I would be okay rebidding it if that's okay with legal staff, with the direction that legal works with our procurement team to straighten out the language and use the code that's correct for the bidding.
And so that everybody understands...
So that everyone knows exactly what we're after, and that we're using the code that's applicable to this issue.
As to whether or not counsel wants to rebid, certainly that's a policy call. We can support that, and we'll be happy to work with procurement to, on these particular bid specifications, to try to alleviate any additional problems with confusion or misunderstandings in the future.
I'm comfortable with that. I guess I would just add, for those in the audience, that one of the issues we had this last go-around were incomplete bids, and those are not acceptable. I mean, for us to go through this process, from where I'm at, an incomplete bid, based upon what was turned in last time, would just be unacceptable, period. And I think everybody needs to really do due diligence and review to make sure, and I'm guessing that there would be a meeting, a pre-bid meeting typically there is, so that questions are, you know, before they have to submit them, that they can have an opportunity to make sure there's no misunderstanding and everybody's on the same page. Is that correct?
I was going to ask that same thing.
Because I think that's really...
So I think that's wise to ask. I know for large construction projects and others we do, it would probably be great, manager, if you would make sure that we employed the best practices on this as well.
Do that.
I agree.
All right. So I think we all understand what the bid is, or the motion is?
Thank you.
All right, item 34. It's an appeal from Conlon Properties from the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission regarding the property at 826 18th Street, Council Communication Number 12-379A is affirming the decision, or B, an alternate resolution reversing the decision. I guess I'll open it up and ask, any council members have any comments?
Maybe if we could just hear from Mike, and then I don't know if the attorney for Mr. Conlon was going to make a comment before we open it up for discussion?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll reserve comments until two of you make presentations. Go ahead.
Mayor Kenny, members of the council, Michael Ludwig, planning administrator. This item was originally heard by the commission on November 30th of 2011, and was appealed to the city council. Back on April 23rd of this year, you heard an appeal of the decision and referred it back to the commission for rehearing. They reheard the item on May 16th and basically reaffirmed their previous decision, and that decision has now been appealed to you. Just, the record was quite substantial on this item that was sent out in the pack, and so just briefly, I want to summarize a few of the documents that were in there. First of all, there was reference to a Section 8 inspection that was done on the rental unit, and I did want to point out that there have been assertions in the record that they were told they had to replace the windows. The inspection record clearly references repairer replacing damaged storm windows on the building, and then also repairing or replacing exterior windows where there were problems on it. So the option was to repair or replace the windows. It's clear that the design standards for the city of Des Moines have two priorities. First is to repair an existing window where possible, and second is to replace it with a like window, like size. And in this instance, since they are wood windows, the standards would suggest wood windows should be replaced. The local standards are even more stringent than the national standards. They follow those. Our standards were reviewed and approved by CHIPO, and ultimately have governed this district for numerous years. The price estimate of the Marvin windows that was quoted in the record is not disputed. Those windows do cost more than vinyl replacement windows, and it is a significant cost difference. But the record also demonstrates that a Windsor brand window was quoted. There was some documentation provided to the commission, and that wood product window has an equivalent price, or roughly equivalent price, to a vinyl replacement window. So there are wood window options that are comparable to the vinyl window pricing that was installed. The Historic Preservation Commission did review the record. They did affirm their previous decision to approve replacement of the windows, subject to the use of wood replacement windows. And staff does recommend that the council uphold the historic commission's decision. I do have photos, if you want, of, again, of those windows in the building and history, but I'm available if you have additional questions.
My question on the, what's on the screen right now, the replacement of the windows, is there a timeline?
There was...
I mean, if we're going through an appeal process, how will that be handled with that body?
Well, ultimately, these were cited in September of 2011, so roughly a year ago now. So on here, I mean, clearly, that's subject to inspection through the Housing Authority and compliance with the HUD regulations for safe housing. So clearly, I'm not clear on, I guess, on their timeline for when it has to be completed by, but they did say repair or replace.
It would be a fair assumption that it has to be taken care of by the time they come back for the inspection?
I would assume, yes. So we do need to get these windows replaced.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thanks, Mike.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Matt McKinney. I'm here on behalf of Conlon Properties. My address is 666 Grand Avenue, Suite 2000, here in Des Moines. I think, I think we've been here before on this particular issue. We've discussed some of the facts. I'm not going to hash through all of them, but as was illustrated before, last September, Conlon Properties got that Section 8 housing report telling them that they needed to repair or replace the windows. We've already been before the Historic Preservation Commission. They've agreed that these windows were in such a deteriorated state that they needed to be replaced. I don't think that's really disputed. I'd like to start off by just showing here the illustration of the house and the windows at issue. I've got a colored photo here, it's kind of coming through a little bit, I guess. The windows we're talking about are in the bottom-left corner here. They're depicted in white, and that is as the house stands now. The proposal, which is in this photo here, is that the windows across the entire front of the home, there will be a uniform color. So we've actually got an exhibit here that shows you what the window will look like. This is an actual window that will be placed, the color, I should say, that will be placed down there in the bottom-left to match identically to the colors throughout the remainder of the house, whether you're on the sidewalk there, you're driving by on the street, you're across a property in a home looking across. You're not going to be able to identify the difference between the window that we're proposing and the remaining windows in the front of the home, the apartment. I'd like to address four different things. The first is, these particular windows, the windows in the bottom-left, right here, they have no historical value. Under the municipal code, Section 5831 Sub C, the Historic Preservation Commission is required to endeavor to approve proposals that have little to no historical value. The last time we were here, we talked about the architectural guidelines as adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission. They identified that the goal of the district is to protect certain historical properties, and it specifically states the resources of Sherman Hill, with the exception of mid-20th century apartment complexes. And then it goes on to talk about how the purpose is to protect those sorts of buildings. Well, what we're looking at here is a seven-unit mid-20th century apartment complex, as we heard before the Historic Commission, and as we pointed out in our appeal. This building, as you see here, it's completely reconstructed around the mid-20th century, sometime between 1920 and 1958, I believe, is the best we know. The siding on it is steel siding. You go up and you tap on it. It's not wood. It sounds like a pop can when you hit it. And so when we got that Section 8 housing notice saying that we needed to replace the windows, it wasn't that we suspected that the Historic Preservation Guidelines would want to protect something that was sited in steel and didn't have original windows on it, so they go ahead and replace a five. We got the stop-work order and immediately stopped replacing those windows. But I bring that to your attention because the guidelines themselves specifically exempt out from the stated purpose mid-20th century apartment complexes, which is exactly what this is. But more importantly, we had an opportunity for a certified appraiser, a gentleman by the name of Gene Nelson. He's an MAI Certified Appraiser and a CCIM Certified Member. We provided his credentials to you in the appeal documents. He provided a written opinion that talks about how these specific windows in this home has little to no historical value. And that's important, because when this issue was before the Historic Commission, the Historic Commission only heard that this home has no historical value. When Mr. Van Essen, who's with the staff, got up to make his presentation, there was no evidence that this home did have any historical value. And so, under the municipal code, the commission was required to endeavor to approve this proposal, which they did not, which is why we're here before you requesting the appeal. Second, the issue about cost, we've been through this before, as was stated tonight, it's undisputed. The cost of the windows that we're seeking to put in are $6,275. These particular windows are of higher quality. We provided detailed scientific studies, believe it or not, that were conducted on the specific windows that we're seeking to install. The studies, for example, they have DP ratings. They're ratings to identify the quality of the window, how strong the window is, how good it is at keeping the heat out in the summer, and the coolness in in the summer. I see I'm out of time. I have a couple minutes to conclude here.
Could you, you think you can do it in one?
Sure. We can do it in one. So we got double the cost on a window that is a lesser quality. And we've gone out there to the property, and I'll tell you, if the city is looking at doubling the costs on repairs and maintenance on homes in the historic, in the historic districts in the city of Des Moines, what's going to happen is you're going to end up with homes where people can't afford it. Mr. Conlon, at the Historic Preservation Commission hearing, made an important point, and that is, under a CoreLogic study, over 50,000 homes here in the Des Moines area are underwater. And by requiring double the cost, what's going to happen is this. This is a home in Sherman Hill, and if you require double the cost for routine repairs and maintenance, that's where we're going to end up. And there are photos here that go on and on. For example, here's a window here. Clearly, as we look here, well, it's not quite clear on this big screen, but as you look at it in person, these windows are not wood. They're something else. They very well could be aluminum, vinyl, we're not sure. Here's another example, Sherman Hill. So we provided our written appeal. It identifies how vinyl actually is permitted in various instances in historic districts, including here in Des Moines, and under the standards adopted by the Secretary of Interior. And I just reiterate what we've written in our appeal. I'd be willing to field any questions that anybody has.
Don't see any at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other folks to speak on this item? If there are, we'd like to have, get an idea how many folks we're going to have to speak on this. Jack, are you guys going to speak on this? We'd like to have you all get over here on this side of the room, if you will, and give Jack a seat nearby. It looks like we have about six. Is that right? All right. Counsel, what do you think?
Three.
Three minutes? Okay. Who's first?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Jack Porter, 815 18th Street. I just wanted to make a couple of points. One, the preservation of Sherman Hill is due in large part to the many homeowners and commercial property owners that have repaired and fixed up their properties. This is a difficult property to evaluate, there's no doubt about it. However, in front of the Historic District Commission, which they appeared to do everything right, they evaluated proposal and said, "These windows, if they're going to be replaced, must be wood windows," period. And I think all of us understand that as we're trying to fix up our home, the greatest value and greatest return is the more accurate the preservation activity is. That is what returns and the reason our neighborhood has increased values over all these years. One point I would like to make is, at least in my mind and my experience, this is not a mid-century apartment building. This is a home built in the 1880s, 1890s, that has been remodeled over the years. There's no doubt, it no longer reflects historic character on the outside. However, there is historic material on the interior, and Mr. Conlon was kind enough to give me a tour of the entry lobby, and the historic stair mostly is still there, and I'm sure there's other features. I think what the important point in front of the council is to support the Historic Commission that you appoint to do their job, and it appears to me personally that they've done a very good job in presenting to you the options to this owner. Thank you.
Robert McCammon, 821 16th Street in Des Moines. I too support the Historic District Commission's decision. I would like to point out, the photos that were shown there at the end of inappropriate windows, just want to clarify that that was showing storm windows on the outside, which aluminum is allowed. That house, I believe, was York Tanser's, and his, I think what we're really discussing is the interior sash, not the storm windows. And York's house does have wood double hung. Those photos at the end were just showing the storm window, so I think that was a little My major concern, I guess, is if vinyl is approved and allowed, if that door is opened, I'm afraid that it can't be walked back. Would this allow other property owners, especially property owners that don't live in the neighborhood, and whether they would be allowed to replace with vinyl? Would that lead to vinyl approvals of vinyl doors, vinyl siding? This is something that the neighborhood has been working to keep out and reverse for the last 30 years, so I'm afraid overturning the Historic District's decision might undo a lot of the work that we've already accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend.
John Royal, 1838 Street. I live in the oldest house in Des Moines owned by the same family. It's 125 years old this year, and I'm delighted to have a start to restore historic areas, but I also sold vinyl windows. And there's a lot of dirty secrets about the vinyl window industry, which are well-marketed and well-hidden. The fact of the matter is that vinyl has a different expansion contraction coefficient than glass, and therefore, what happens is you get seal failure. What you will see on a vinyl warranty, for example, is you'll see a lifetime warranty on the frame, because the frame will not degrade, but you will not see any kind of frame warranty like that on the glass, so you'll start seeing glass pack failure, which is where you get auging between the glasses and stuff like that. You'll also see the fact you get sagging in the meeting rail on vinyl windows, because they're not structurally designed. This old house says a vinyl window should not be any wider than 23 inches. They're not interested in protecting the vinyl industry. What the industry does is they put metal in there, which now has a third element, now have glass, vinyl, and metal, which are expanding at different levels, which will destroy the window faster. A vinyl window basically has a life expectancy of five to 15 years. I sold a lot of windows, replacing vinyl windows that had been replaced 10 years ago, 15 years ago, and stuff like that. So we're looking at a fast fix for historic district. We have lots of areas in town which a vinyl window is appropriate for, because the housing doesn't require that sort of thing. In historic districts, we're trying to revitalize... In Historic District, we're trying to revitalize and hold on to structure and integrity of the community. And in the process of holding on to that integrity, we want to have things that have life expectancy. My house, I just repaired three windows at the cost of a couple hundred dollars a window that had the old wood in it, but they're good for another 125 years probably at this point. The quality of the materials available today is not what it was, so the importance of holding to the quality that we can, in terms of windows and the integrity of the view and stuff like that, is actually a best investment, I know, of the community, it's going to bring the values up. My house is assessed at about $112,000. I have to reinsure it for about $350,000, this replacement value. I would like to see the value of the house come up to the level of that. If I had it in West Des Moines, it would be much closer to that value. So it's important, I think, for us to not let things like vinyl, which are cheap and efficient, to get in, if they're not going to be long-term lasting, and we'll be facing this problem of rundown properties again in the near future. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Tanya Keith, I live at 1737th Street. And I am also part of the Riverbend neighborhood, and I am one of the newer residents in Riverbend. And we also have a historic property. What I wanted to point out, what got me to come up and speak today, was that photo that he showed of the house doesn't give you a picture of what the rest of that block looks like. My family and I drove by that block yesterday. This is the one house on the street that has metal siding, isn't, probably not the one house, but I think there are maybe two or three places that are not a painted lady that's gorgeous Victorian that has been restored. And I think the next speaker is going to tell you what that house looked like in the past and what it could be restored to in the future. My house is the Hatton House. It was also built 125 years ago, very similar vintage to this house, and it was also cut up into eight apartments. If you have been to my house, I know you've been to my house, it is a gorgeous architectural gem. And even though it was cut into eight apartments, it was pulled back by people who worked much harder than I have worked so far on it. These houses are an architectural resource in the city of Des Moines. My husband and I looked for five years for a four-bedroom house that was in a price range that we could afford. I moved to Des Moines almost 20 years ago from the East Coast, and it was important to me to live in a historic home. This is something that when people move into Des Moines from the coast, they're looking for historic properties. My friends drool over my Facebook pictures of how affordable it is to buy a historic home in Des Moines. This is a marketing piece, and allowing someone to take a house that was built in 1888 and put vinyl windows into it is a sin. And all I can say is, if you're in a Historic District, you have to respect the Historic District. And if you don't want to be in a Historic District, there are plenty of rental properties in Des Moines that you can buy as an investment property. And allow people like me, who are passionate about bringing these architectural gems back from eight-place apartments into Historic Properties for our families, don't allow this building to be pillaged with vinyl windows when there are such great architectural qualities to it. Allow someone to take the metal siding off the house and replace the wood windows with wood windows, and get it to be a ship-o project with architectural tax credits. This is not the way to solve this problem. Thank you.
Tanya, thank you.
David Sweet, 1328 9th Street. I live in the Riverbend area now. I'm also a member of the Historic Preservation Commission and a former longtime resident of the Sherman Hill neighborhood from 1988 to 2003. And boy, do I remember the bad old days, back when there were no rules. I'm here to speak on behalf of Historic Preservation Commission, my official capacity as a member. When we heard Mr. Conlon's proposal the last time, I voted to deny his request to install vinyl windows at the above property. I based my decision on several things. First, regardless of how many modifications this property has undergone, and I have a picture here of what it originally looked like when it was built, I don't know if the camera's working or not. It's the one right behind the little electric car with the arrow pointing at it. And it could be taken back to that with a lot of work, and I've seen a lot of houses when I lived in that neighborhood that were far worse off than the property we're discussing that have been beautifully restored to look just like that again. Anyway, regardless of how many modifications the property's undergone since its conversion from single-family, it's still abstracted and taxed, not as a mid-century apartment building, but as an 1880s structure. And somewhere under all of that vinyl and aluminum and everything else, there's still an 1880s-era house waiting to be restored. And, you know, it may not be by this owner, but it could be by some future owner. And I think that it's important that we don't take away anything more or do anything more to this property to devalue it and steer people away from it than has already been done in the past several decades or so. You know, I've seen some amazing restorations of buildings like this that you'd never thought could be brought back from the brink, but they were, just in the Sherman Hill neighborhood alone. And that kind of speaks for itself, especially among the residents and people who live there. Second, I based my decision on the precedent and the rules previously enforced by the same commission. To my knowledge, we've never allowed anyone to use vinyl replacement windows in any historic structure. Third, drawing from my own experience with vinyl windows, no matter how well-made they are, they're not wooden windows and they don't last 125 years, maintained or not. As such, they're not of the same quality as wood windows in performance or appearance. They often don't fit well, requiring further destruction of the building in order to quote "make them fit." And they wear far quickly than, far more quickly than wood, especially after all the gas leaks out from in-between the individuals' double or triple paints. Then they take on sort of a look like a milk jug, sort of a hazy look, and you can't really see out through them. And that's not very attractive.
Could we ask you to kind of wrap up your overtime?
Oh, certainly, certainly. Anyway, I'll just sum up that I made this decision based on prior precedent, prior experience with the product, and a need to preserve what we already have and not install anything that's going to detract from the neighborhood or surrounding area.
David, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, my name's Chad in Halfhill, I live at 1902 Woodland Avenue, number 300. And I guess you've heard this evening some testimony about the quality of vinyl windows. I would say, the only thing I can say to that would be that installation is probably more important than either, well, let's just say that you've heard testimony about the concern about vinyl windows in a historic structure. I would like to note, from my position, that I also own investment property both in Sherman Hill and in the Eastern Ward and the Fairgrounds neighborhood. And so, as an investor in property and somebody who works as a landlord, if you will, I think it's very important when I make a decision to purchase a building, if it's going to be in a Historic District, I enter into that agreement with the understanding and intent that I will be performing under the guidelines of Historic Preservation Commission. So my concern in this discussion today is more about upholding and respecting the authority of the Historic Preservation Commission. I'm an advocate, obviously, for, or not so obvious, but I'm an advocate for historic preservation and quality construction. I think part of what the power of historic preservation is, is that the buildings are restored in a way that's congruent with the quality of the workmanship that was there to begin with. I think that's a very good testament, when you look at the existing built environment that we have in our city, and we need to uphold that. But as an investor, there's a tough balance between the economic reality of investing in a building and being able to have that building maintain and support itself, a little different than in a homeownership. However, we have the option to elect as investors, what neighborhood we choose to be in and where we invest. And I would like to say that as an investor, I support the Historic Preservation Commission and their support, and would encourage this council to work with the Conlon Properties to, if it's an economic decision, then find something that works, but uphold the character and the integrity of the building itself and the authority of the Preservation Commission, because if you don't, my concern is it will further erode future decisions, and I don't think that's in the best interest of the city.
Chad, thank you.
Jim Conlon, 319 7th Street, Des Moines, Iowa. Heard a number of comments, and the stories seem to keep changing. I have no problem, I have nothing but respect for anybody who wants to put money into their property, however they want to do it. Mr. Porter was up, he is proud of his home, he well should be proud of his home. He claims that it's increased in value, it's increased in value. Also, he's filed tax abatement for $30,000 of improvements, and the assessed value has gone down $10,000, so that's a $40,000 drop. I can't afford to do that. He can? Great. This is an investment property for me. Since this has all been going on, we've spent $40,000, excuse me, $30,000 on the inside of this property, with new boilers, new hot water system, a number of things inside. This property is not wanting. I recall last week I was watching television, Mr. Clark was on. And Mr. Clark said, because of all the economic challenges you folks are facing every day, one thing you're going to have to do, in his own words, and I couldn't agree with him more, that you're going to have to do more with less over the next five-year period. Now, you know you've had a 34% decrease in residential values nationwide by actual statistics. You've got 21.8% of Des Moines property that's affected either by underwater mortgages, they don't have sufficient equity to sell, or they're in foreclosure. That's more than 30,000 Des Moines residents. That's a major issue. Now, in terms of this issue about vinyl, I think that's good housekeeping seal, that's a beautiful, beautiful thing. Vinyl is structurally superior to what the Historic Commission recommended I put in my building. Now, the next time you take off from the Des Moines Airport, if you look out your window and you don't see two pieces of plastic wrapped in vinyl, you see wood, 75-year-old refinished wood with a single paint in it, you're going to ask for another drink before you take They didn't use refinished windows in the space shuttle. So paraphrasing Mr. Clark's comments, doing more with less. You, as leaders of the city, I can't accept that you're going to force residents of this city to pay double the amount what it cost them to repair their property and have substandard materials. And by the way, that picture we showed was York Tanser's house. He's lived in there for seven years. He's your representative on Historic Commission. And anybody who lived in something that looked like that should be embarrassed. Thank you.
If there's no one else to speak, we'll go ahead and close the hearing. And I guess start, Mrs. Hensley?
Okay. This is the second time it's been here, and to be perfectly honest, having had opportunity to visit with Mr. Conlon's legal staff earlier today, I was of the feeling that we needed to look at, based upon discussions that we had with Riverbend a couple of weeks ago, definition of materials and what's appropriate today versus what is being recommended by Historic District, and giving us time to work through that. But to be perfectly honest, I'm not confident that if that comes forward, that we would still be interested in looking at vinyl, and I think the real question is the vinyl windows. The Historic District Commission is, has, the neighborhoods that qualify as Historic Neighborhoods, they have voted, they have the majority of individuals that have expressed interest and agreed to do that. And I guess I'm at the point now where I think we're just prolonging the inevitable. I'm supportive of the Historic District. I believe, and I've had this conversation with you, Jim, that, and I know we don't always agree on this, but you've done other projects in Sherman Hill, and they complied. I know that you had to go through a process to get them to comply. I feel that what the Historic District is recommending, I don't believe if we asked them to go back and revisit the materials question, that they would make any, that would make any difference on the question behind, before us right now with the vinyl windows. So my options are, we can prolong the inevitable, we could go ahead and take a vote right now so that, depending upon how the vote comes out, you would have the option of going through District Court to overturn this. And I guess I'm at the point where I think we just need to allow this to move forward. I don't know where the rest of the council is, but, and I'm looking to Legal here, because he was involved in the discussion earlier today, if you have other thoughts that you want to address. I guess, right now, I'm of the feeling that we just need to go forward and let it play out in the process, because I'm supportive of the Historic District Commission. I don't believe that if we referred it back, that there would be anything that would come back to us that would allow the use of a vinyl window, to be perfectly honest.
If I may, one of the things that we pointed out to the commission was that, in the event, a lot of things were brought up before the Historic Commission. And there was a lot of kind of conflict on what the standard is, what the standard isn't. We provided in our appeal and before the Historic Preservation Commission, the different guidelines provided by the Secretary of Interior. I'm not sure that the Historic Preservation Commission understands, understood at the time, exactly what those specific standards were, because there were a lot of questions floating around. So at the end of the, at the end of the presentation, I made the suggestion, referencing the Des Moines Municipal Code, that the Preservation Commission can, and I believe should, if they don't know what the standard is, the code allows them to consult with experts on particular issues. What is the standard? Can vinyl be used? What is the Historic, the Department of Interior, what do they look to? I invited them to consider those issues, I invited them to consider hearing from experts, we provided one, we didn't have anybody else competing. But in the event that the City Council would believe that it would be beneficial before entering into a final resolution, to really understand what those standards are and what is permitted under the Secretary of Interior standards, I would invite, again, the opportunity for people to come in and address those particular issues. And whether or not that's here before the City Council or back before the Preservation Commission, that's just a concern I have. I think if you were to go back and listen or watch the proceeding with the Historic Preservation Commission, you would have the same concern that the standards were certainly up in the air.
So, from where I'm sitting at right now, we have two options. One option would be to go ahead and take action based upon the appeal, vote it up or down. The other option would be to refer it back. I know we had discussion, I believe the mayor was the one that opened the door when we discussed the Riverbend and discussion of the different types of products, what was acceptable composite versus the vinyl. And I think Historic District actually recommended composite on the Riverbend project, and the fact that that was not actually material that was available at the time the property was constructed. So we would have that option, and we could continue the hearing. So I am...
I, if that's a request for some feedback, I have some.
Go ahead.
I want to do all I can to protect the integrity of the Historic Commission, the Historic District in Sherman Hill, and other ones...
Historic District in Sherman Hill and other ones we have in the city, but I, I think that this is a really tough one, because I'm not prepared to say they can't put these windows in. I wouldn't vote to support the Historic District Commission tonight, but I also don't necessarily want to just vote no, because that does open the door without much definition from us as council or the Historic District Commission. It isn't necessarily the wood to vinyl or wood to, you know, metal that concerns me on this. It's the fact that we're talking about two windows that aren't a part of the original construction of the building. It's a part of a building that could have been constructed as recently as 1957, which is about as old as my house, which isn't very historic. And it matches windows that are already in existence in other portions of the building. It's an addition to it. Those are all troubling aspects to me, and so if we were to allow it, I don't necessarily want to vote to allow it tonight either, until we tighten that up a little bit. I've read carefully the roll call that our legal staff has put together to support and affirm the Historic District Commission, and the one that is written as an alternate resolution to, to, to allow the, the windows. I probably tell you, I'll tell you, I think the more compelling of the two is the alternate rule to allow them. I, I think it's reasoned, but I think it opens the door to a lot. So my suggestion is, we really do what the mayor suggested previously. We don't affirm the decision, and we spend some time trying to figure out exactly in what cases and by what standard would we allow products such as this before we allow at one place, and then there's an avalanche of building applications to, to put windows in. I'm, I'm not necessarily, I'm, I've been very supportive of the Historic Districts, but I also want to bring common sense to it, that it's hard to set a precedent that every single window in Sherman Hill has to be replaced with a certain product, even if the window's already been replaced once since it was constructed in the 1950s. That's, that's a hard argument, I think, to sustain against homeowners who we'd like to be encouraged to fix properties up.
I could ask a question. If we refer this back to Historic District Community Development for the ongoing discussion and definitions, description, what would be the timeline on that? That be Mike?
As you're discussing it, I'm hoping that we could get it back within 30 days, but I do, having owned a property in the Historic District and have had to meet certain standards, whether it's with a fence out back in terms of design or whatever, I think that I support the Historic District's stand on, on these issues. However, I think we, we had an issue last month that I think was appropriately addressed some of the concerns. You know, where do you draw that line? You know, we talk about composite materials, whether it be hard boards or other things, and now we have glue in between and whatever, and if you put it on the front porch, you do it this way, and you, and I've seen what happens when that stuff delaminates, and that's allowed. And you look at it, you think, why would they allow this? I mean, you know, it doesn't look like the product that was put on the regular hardboard, full boards that were on there, and it doesn't delaminate, it rots occasionally and does stuff like that, but properly cared for. It, it wouldn't. I just think that, that it, the discussion of appropriate materials in appropriate circumstances ought to be had as moving forward. Where are you going to draw the line? How are you going to do it? Because I, I agree with the gentleman last, last month, some of those things that are allowed, that are wood shavings with glue in it, often don't perform very well and don't look good in the 15, 20-year timeframe that, you know, we just talked about with the vinyl windows. I'm not advocating for vinyl windows, will you, because when I did work down there, we put wood windows in there when the others were totally rotten, but, and it, we did take a seven-plex back to a single-family home. So I understand what Mr. Conlon went through, and I understand going through the, the right direction that one is given from the Historic District Commission, but I do think that on occasion you need to revisit materials in the 20th century and at least have the open discussion, transparent open discussion, as to how we're going to deal with some of this stuff, because some of the stuff that has been allowed most recently, quite frankly, if I was going back to the original, I would say, why are you allowing that stuff? Now you're allowing some things that, that I don't even agree with, but at any rate. Mike?
Timeline.
Yeah. Mayor, County, and members of the council, I would suggest at a minimum 60 days, and the reasoning behind that is, the next commission meeting, I believe, is in less than a week and a half from now, so that would not leave, I don't think, appropriate time for even staff analysis and get a staff report written and be back here in 30 days. So their next meeting would not be until like the third week of August, so we already be beyond that. The other thing is, I believe that the, the current standards had to be reviewed by SHPO, as well as, I, I don't recall, I wasn't here at the time, whether those had to go on through the National Park Service for adoption, but there was at least consultation with SHPO at some level of the review of those standards before they were adopted by the city. And the third reason would be that I believe we'd need to have a public, or the commission would have to at least hold a public hearing on proposed changes to that, because we recently just adopted a Historic District that had those standards applied to it. Those were explained to the current residents that were in that, as well as the residents in this current district, and so there would need to be opportunity for input and discussion at those levels on, on any new standards that would be adopted. So I'd say a minimum 60 days.
So if we're talking about 60 days, then we'd be looking at probably the first council meeting in September? So then, my question would be, would it be possible for us to have a workshop, have it on a workshop agenda so that we could have additional discussion at the council with the recommendations before it actually then was on a council agenda?
We could, we could sure do that. Mrs. Hensley?
And I'm just, so that would probably be the 27th of August?
And throwing out 60 days, depending on what we hear back from the state and the hearings, we may have to recommend an extension.
That would be, I'd have a discussion, which is what you asked for, so we could do that. There might be additional process after that, but we could certainly have a discussion.
Okay. So my mo-
What happens with the windows in between?
Well, based upon the conversation, or, that was when I asked, was it Mike? The question about, there's not going to be any problem or penalty not having them replaced. It would be if there's another inspection, but my guess is, since this is an appeal process, that it would...
Yeah. I, I can't speak for HUD on, on their rental certificates, what their requirements are for when the next certificate would come due on that. I'd have to do research on that, but clearly, they've been in an appeal process, so from a, from a city enforcement standpoint, I would assume enforcement will be stayed until there was a resolution.
When you, when you say HUD, you're talking about the Section 8?
Yeah.
Inspection that caused, that initiated the replacement of the one?
The HUD minimum standards that have to be met for housing in order to qualify for the Section 8 program.
Could you check back into that and give it, answer the city manager, and he can let us know?
So that's problematic.
I don't think that we're all that surprised that you can't speak for HUD.
Okay.
We'll do.
Anybody else? So...
So my motion is to refer it back. I'm going to say to community development, working with Historic District Commission to go through the process of revisiting the criteria, the materials, and working with SHPO and all of the appropriate entities that we have to go through to do that before it comes back for a recommendation, which will be discussed at a workshop before it's on a council agenda.
Okay. I want to be, I want to be careful, because I think it's assumed in everything that you listed, but one of my issues is, what about this definition of mid-century? What about replacement of additions and other things? How do you draw the line for that as well in terms of enforcement and the material used? I, I think it's inherent in what you're saying, I just want to make sure we underline that as well.
While we're voting, Ms. Porter, do you have a...
Yes, sir. I would like to make one offer. Jack Porter, State Historic Society of Iowa, 815 18th Street in Des Moines. We give workshops throughout the year on the Secretary of Interior standards, and although the 27th of August, I think, is the same day as the downtown summit in Keokuk, I would like to offer our office to give those of the council and members of the commission a workshop on the standards. We try to make it less than an hour, and it might be a very boring time for you, but we find it pretty exciting to give you some grounds on trying to make these decisions as much as you can.
We'd ask that anybody that might have a music machine, that you might shut it off.
So, actually, that's pretty good. So, we do have a PowerPoint, and not that we have all the answers, I'm not saying that at all, but at least we could give maybe the, a joint workshop with the commission members and the council that might be interested in staff.
Can I ask, Jack, can I ask you, not to interrupt you totally, but for, could you address whether or not our Historic District regulations, guidelines mirror those that you would give us a workshop on?
Yes.
They do?
Secretary of Interior standards, there's 10, but there's also guidelines that the Department of Interior puts out that are helpful in trying to make the decisions, and perhaps we could put in the mail to you the booklet that they produce. It's really straightforward, and it's written in lay terms, or at least attempt to, and it talks about alternative materials, windows, porches, roofing, masonry. I'll try to get some of the, I'm leaving tomorrow morning, actually, for Baltimore to attend a National Park Service training session on the standards, but I, I'll try to find if we, through Judy or somebody, if they could provide counsel.
But the Des Moines standards are, mirror those, as opposed to be even, for instance, more stringent than even what those federal standards are?
No, it's, it's interpretation of the standards.
The Des Moines is?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's right.
I just want to clarify for everybody. So if you'll share one of those with Mr. Conlon and his representative, I think that they'd love to have more reading at night.
I would be glad to do that.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Coleman?
Seven yes?
I wrote Mercy and said I thought it would be done by seven.
All right. Hopefully, that is perfectly clear what's going to happen, and we will see everybody in the next eight weeks, and hopefully have a workshop in between. Item 35, on the conveyance by installment contract of 1740 Garfield Avenue, the Logan Community Center to Joshua Christian Academy, Inc., for $100,000. This item was continued from June 25th of 2012, and Council Communication Number 12-371. Yes, Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, council members, this was continued from your last meeting. There's been a good deal of work that's been done since that time, and I'd like to just highlight, I'm not going to really try to talk about some of the intricate details, I'll leave it to staff who spent an enormous amount of time researching different things, but I do want to give you a general outline as to the areas of inquiry and generally how we've tried to resolve those. Number one, you had asked for us to have an additional meeting with the neighbors. That meeting was conducted last Monday, and I believe there's representatives here from the neighborhood that are prepared to voice their opinions tonight. Number two, there were issues raised around this table as part of your motion regarding financial capability and maintenance. The contract to sell the property addresses those issues and requires those as stipulations prior to the conveyance of any prop, of, of the property itself, and I understand that the, that Joshua Christian Academy has supplied information about their financial capabilities or their fundraising effort that's part of the packet. There's also a condition in the agreement that talks about the requirements to maintain the property. That was a concern that was addressed here around the table, a very legitimate concern, and there is a provision in the contract that requires them to take good care of the property and provides an enforcement ability to the city as part of one of the contract provisions. There was also discussion about the nonprofit status of the corporation, that has been addressed as well. And the last two points, number one, since the last meeting, apparently, the air conditioning in the building has completely failed, is my understanding. The cost just to do the initial or partial repair of that, I'm told, is $21,000, and by rights, that is a cost that the city should absorb, either through a reduction in the price or through undertaking the work. I think maybe the best approach would be to leave the sale price the same and, and have the city try to undertake that work before conveyance of the property would occur. And the last thing I want to mention is that there was concerns or suggestions about the ability of the building to be used for various neighborhood programs or programs of benefit to the neighborhood. I understand that came up at the neighborhood meeting and that there was discussion, and I understand some general agreement. I'll allow the Joshua Christian Academy folks to articulate that themselves this evening, but I understand they're willing to allow that to take place in the building, and I also understand that the suggestion was made that we look for some additional programming in the park, which is right next to the building, that the city would undertake. So Mayor and council, those are general comments about what's happened since then, and as I said, staff from several departments, including Legal and Engineering and CD, are here and would be available to answer specific questions about our side of it as well.
Any comments by council members? If not, let's go ahead and open up the hearing and see if there's anyone like to make any comments, statements in regard to what the manager just presented.
Good evening, Mayor, County, and to the city council members. My name is Reverend Keith A. Rattler, Sr., Pastor, Maple Street Missionary Baptist Church, 1552 Maple Street, also the Executive Director of Joshua Christian Academy. I want to thank you for your time, and also all the work that has been done by staff and certainly by Neighborhood Association, as we've tried to come to consensus and agreement of what would be best to do in that particular building, the Logan Center. Our concern is, and the city manager has brought it forward, and we appreciate that in regards to, we would like the city to install a new rooftop system for the part of the building that is currently being rented by DHS. It has been recommended in regards to what the city manager has stated, and we are certainly in agreement with that as Joshua Christian Academy. We have had several meetings, we have tried to have a packet, we've had a packet delivered to the council members of all the activities that we've been involved in as Joshua Christian Academy since the proposal that was set forth by Joshua. I believe everyone has that, and we just would hope that the council would be in support and vote positive for Joshua Christian Academy to purchase the Logan Center. We have met with a number of groups in regards to youth activities, possibly in the evenings, weekends, summer activities, lifeline, we put that in the packet. They're in agreement, we had met with CHAMP's. Doug Romig did an excellent job of getting us a meeting with these two particular youth agencies, and we just feel very confident. We want to start out certainly slow with a number of activities, as we stated in the MLK meeting. We don't want to have a dozen programs and none of them succeed after-school activities. We want to start off small with after-school activities and see it grow in a positive way, but we feel very excited and we feel very positive about what can come out of the after-school activities there at the Logan Center.
Have you had a chance to sit down with Mr. Jenkins after the last council meeting? Has he been involved in the discussion?
No, I personally have had not another discussion with Mr. Jenkins. We have had another meeting with MLK, the Neighborhood Association. Very positive meeting.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Kurt Wagner.
And as far as our part goes in this, our concerns came in because Logan was our local community center, and we have a lot of youth that we need to take care of. In further conversations during the last meeting with Joshua Christian Academy and the city representatives, we feel that some of these needs will be met. We also would like to express to the city that we still need to do more for our kids in our neighborhood, but our recommendation is to support this at this time. And that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other speakers to speak in regard to this item? Seeing none, let's have a discussion amongst our council members, and we'll close the hearing, and then if you guys will stay available, if there's any questions, why we'll present them to you. Ellie, or Bob?
First off, I want to thank Kurt and Juanita for the neighborhood meeting that we had out there. It was well-attended, and everybody worked out some of their problems. They got the questions answered, and I thought it went very well. And so, and we do want to make sure that we always include neighborhoods before we make a decision that's gonna be affecting the neighborhoods, and that it was possibly an oversight that we didn't have that before, so. And somebody asked, I did have a conversation with Odell Jenkins and clarified a few things, statements that were made here, and that he did not attend the neighborhood meeting. He had an opportunity to, but he didn't. He elected not to. So I don't think that there's any opposition to this. I think they're all looking forward that this is gonna be a betterment to their neighborhood, and they'll be able to work with the Joshua Academy to bring in more opportunities for the youth in the area over there. So that's my comment. If you want a motion now or later, whatever.
Anybody else? Ellie? Skip?
Well, I'm prepared to vote for this since the neighborhood came forward on it, and they're supporting it. The issue I've got is the $20,000,000 for the air conditioner. We had a presentation from Smith Metzger, and I remember him saying that there was an issue with the HVC in the building, and he's got a line in here in which he indicates $725,000 in replacement repairs need to be made on that building. Now, that would include an addition if we'd had it. I think everybody was aware that the heating and air conditioning was in bad shape, and it was gonna need to be replaced. You know, I'll follow Bob's lead on this, but I think Reverend Ratliff, you know, the mayor brought this up two weeks ago. You need to be aware that that building might need to be completely renovated in some ways. The other issue that bothers me is we're selling this on installment, so technically the building could come back to us. And I'm just wondering if, in the middle of this winter, the heating goes down, and if Josh was not able to replace it, what's gonna happen at that point?
I think Skip makes a wise point about the installments. I feel good that we're making the right decision here, but in the coming weeks, if staff had any additional thoughts on even incentive for a full prepayment or something, I'd be interested in an amendment to that so that the transfer could fully be made quicker. We could do that by amendment another time and get it done tonight. The one thing I wanted to say is a, just a note of appreciation. I had a list of a couple of things that concerned me regarding nonprofit status and some other things. I was not very confident they could get the work done in a couple of weeks, and they did, and I want to thank you for that. They even sent me a copy of the check and the certified mail card they had scanned before they sent it off to show me that it got done and filed, and I appreciate that and impressed that the group of supporters were willing to step up, because I know that came from some personal funds to get that done right away. So, thank you for understanding my concerns and addressing them.
Christine?
I would just add to the discussion regarding the contract here. I'm very supportive of the program vindicated, so I think it's a good use of the facility, and I'm pleased with the work that's been done to bring all of the different groups together, and I know that you'll be very successful just based upon what you've done so far. So, having said that, I'm also hopeful that now that you actually have identified the building, you're beginning the process of ownership here, that hopefully some of your funders will come forward quicker, and I'm guessing that that probably will be the case, and that based upon your track record for the last couple of years, I'm confident that those funders will be there, and hopefully you can complete that contract with the city in a much quicker manner.
Right. Anything?
Sounds good to me.
All right. The only thing that I would comment on, I think that it follows a little bit what Skip said. Everything that we have done, and Reverend Ratliff and I both acknowledged one another's presence at a number of meetings discussing that building, and that staff had said that there was significant work that needed to be done on HVAC and an elevator and some windows and some other things, but it was, you know, pretty clear that there was a lot of work that needed to be done to, you know, keep everything up and maintained. I am really feel badly, I'm not sure what the terms of the lease are, Mr. Manager, with the current tenant in there regarding the air conditioner, but I'm somewhat reluctant, given all the reports that we've had from staff, and that it was well-known by everybody that a lot of work had to be done, that whether or not we ought to be now stepping up to put a brand-new HVAC in part of it, or at least air conditioner, because it seemed as though that was well-documented and that there were issues around all of that from the outset of our discussions. I'm also somewhat discouraged that, you know, our discussions regarding the possible use by our housing department unfortunately didn't work out. I thought it was a great opportunity. It seemed like the right-sized building to do that. It seemed like a reasonable location, but we got, at the last meeting, after a quick analysis by an outside contractor, sort of dissuaded us, I think, from moving ahead with that, that sort of an idea with the very significant cost estimates that he threw at us. Kind of made that look as though it was not as feasible as it appeared. But I do have some concern regarding whether or not we should now pick up the expense of a brand-new air unit there, even though I'm not quite sure. I mean, a repair might make some sense, but putting a brand-new one on there, I'm reluctant to think that, especially when we're, you know, gonna turn over a 30,000-square-foot building built to a government standard for $100,000. Seems like a pretty good buy, and hopefully Joshua Academy can make great use of it over time and give a lot of young people an opportunity to get an education of a type that they desire and might not otherwise get. So...
May I respond?
Yeah.
Is it all right?
Sure.
All we are stating in regards to Joshua Christian Academy, to our understanding, the report stated that there are seven units costing approximately $121,000 if the total units were replaced. All we're asking the city is, is that the unit, which would be one unit, I believe the cost, the estimate was $21,000, be replaced in regards to the rented part that DHS is using. So, we're not asking for seven units to be replaced. We're asking for one unit, which is the unit, we don't have possession. It hasn't been voted on as of yet. So, we're just fairly and honestly asking that the city would take care of the one unit, and then we'll have to deal with the other units. And so, that was our proposal in that regard.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I think they've gone into this knowing what estimates we had. I mean, they're not going into thinking this is a Taj Mahal or anything. They're going into the idea that they gotta make repairs and identify how they want to operate for their schooling, too. So, you know, I don't feel that we're trying to push this building off on them at all. I think it's an opportunity for them, and they went into it with their eyes open.
And I think in fairness to the work that was done on the previous review and analysis, that was to convert the use of the building from a school classroom setting to a different use. They're retaining that setup, so a lot of the work that would have been required to convert isn't necessary.
Yeah, you're right. And they operate under different standards than what the city would have to operate under, so, yeah.
Hopefully, for students, it would even be a higher standard, I would hope.
I don't think so.
So, what's the motion?
Motion is to affirm the... Item 35, the contract, and to, we send the best of luck with it.
Could you include the $21,000 for the air conditioner?
Yeah, I would, but hopefully we'll review the contract we have with DHS and make sure that that doesn't fall under their responsibility.
We will do that.
And just so you know, Reverend, I fully support what the neighborhoods have decided, whatever. I do not, however, support the city spending another $21,000 on a new unit. So, for that reason alone, I'm gonna vote no.
Do you want to make those separate?
No. He's got a six to one. He's ready to go. And I will fulfill my directive to sign the contract as presented, so.
You could even circle where you voted no.
Item 36, on Grays Lake Trail Connection, resolution proving the plan, specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, receive and file bids, and designate the lowest responsible bidder as Corell Contractor, Inc. Grant S. Corell, President, $282,308.70. Council Communication number 12-369. A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Anyone?
I'm gonna go ahead and move this item, and I would just ask the question, if somebody could get back to us exactly when we would start the construction, because I know that we've had the public meetings with the neighborhood associations, and I just want to make sure that they're in sync here based upon some of the comments that have come up.
Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, there's a motion?
Six yes, one no. Or, excuse me, one absent.
Item 37, on the 2012 Park Playground Improvements Resolution Proving the Plan, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineer's Estimate, and Receive and File the Bids and Designating the Lowest Responsible Bidder as TK Concrete, Inc. Tony J. Vermeer, President, $180,863. Council Communication number 12-365. A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none. We have a motion on the 2012 Park Playground Improvements contract.
Move.
Been moved. Any discussion?
Six yes, one no.
Item 38, the 2012 Sewer Repair Contract Number Two, the Resolution Proving the Plan, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineer's Estimate, Receive and File Bids, and Designating the Lowest Responsible Bidder as the Underground Company Limited, Dwayne Burkhart, President, $322,452.50. Council Communication number 12-359. A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Anyone here to speak on the 2012 Sewer Repair Contract Number Two? Seeing none? Been moved.
Got it hit it, sorry.
Seven yes.
Item 39, on the 2012 HMA Pavement Scarification and Reservicing Resolution Proving the Plan, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineer's Estimate, Receive and File Bids, and Designating the Lowest Responsible Bidder as OMG Midwest, Inc., doing business as Des Moines Asphalt and Paving, James Gauger, President, $724,131.50. Council Communication number 12-362. A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Anyone here to speak on the HMA Pavement Scarification and Reservicing? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
Move.
It's been moved. Any discussion?
Seven yes.
All right. Could we have a motion to adjourn? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all for attending. We are adjourned.
Before we all leave, we got the ribbon cutting at the Grand View Clubhouse tomorrow night, 5:00.
Tomorrow night, ribbon cutting, Grand View Clubhouse.
The bright...
The bright Grand View. A very bright Grand View Clubhouse. Thank you.
I'm gonna be... But what are they gonna watch?